All right, we are just waiting to get a quorum here. Uh, give it, it's uh, pretty much close to the top of the hour, but we'll just give it a couple more minutes. Hello Diane, hello Trevor, hello Richard, hello Tom. Hello city clerk.
Hello. A lot of familiar faces.
It's probably before your time, everyone, but do you guys remember Romperum? Maybe this isn't a good time to bring this up, but while we're waiting, remember what she used to say, you know? And I see, you know, it's like, and I see Trevor and I see Richard. And that was back in the days when she really couldn't see us.
And I, I remember that.
Do you?
Oh yeah, I'm older than you. I think I'm older than everyone in the city that is a council member, city clerk, city manager, and planning commissioner.
Well, you don't look at, that's why we didn't know.
Well, I have my hair colored and makeup, just kidding, I don't wear makeup, but I did go to, on a little walk today, and my cheeks are a touch.
Get that.
I actually, today I met Brian, the new um, chief, the new sheriff, I mean.
Oh.
Yeah.
Cool.
So I had a chat with him because different people in the neighborhood want to start a neighborhood watch. Because of, you know, what's happened last night, Richard, and the night before.
Yeah.
So, he said, I think he's talked to Eli about it and about how to get together. So that'll be good.
Yeah, that's great. I sent a note to Eli too, um, just following up on the note I'd sent to the, or the discussion at the city council. I think I did it, uh, during the floor comments, I think I mentioned that there'd been a lot of discussion on Trinidad next door. So, you know, on the website next door, so there'd be quite a few comments there, so. Um, I think Richard Johnson is uh, going to join us. Um, I don't see him on. Let me just get my toggle here. Let's, let's give him another minute or two, it's only two minutes after, and uh, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, he needs to be here.
To be here, definitely.
So Erin, are you ready?
Oh gosh, no Diane, why would I be ready?
Well.
I've got papers all over my dorm room here, I've, you know.
Paper, yeah, you said, see mine, my husband was going to the shredder next week, so I've gotta grab what I need.
Unfortunately, a few folks out sick, so I've been held at work and not, not able to come home. We, we won't let people leave if we don't have the ability to keep enough bodies on the fire engines and the ambulances, so. Uh, I am at work, so if I get a call, I'm gonna have to disappear and come back, hopefully.
Oh, so you're in.
He's on duty.
Nevada right now, yeah.
Nevada.
Yeah, I'm on duty, yeah.
Is it raining?
No, it's beautiful today, it was sunny and gorgeous down here, yeah, it was absolutely wonderful day. I regretted wearing a long sleeve for most of the day.
Okay, you know, my son and um, my grandkids and daughter-in-law live in San Anselmo.
Okay.
He works for UPS. So he's going to bed right now because he works in the middle of the night.
Right.
Yeah. So how are the COVID cases down there?
Um, steady, you know, we've, we've transported a few, there's a, you know, some hotels down here that have been designated as kind of shelters for them, you know, taking over wings and that kind of stuff, we've got one here in Nevada, and there's a few in the county. But uh, you know, I'd, I'd happily tell anybody that it is real. It's not, it's not a made-up illness, and people get quite sick from it.
Well, my um, health clinic called today, so they'll call me in two weeks and then schedule my vaccination and my husband. So that's good, because I'm not going to CVS, I'm not going to the fairgrounds, I wanna go to my doctor's office. It's just that age thing.
Right.
So. All right, Richard, where are you?
Yeah, I don't see him. Well, let's give him another minute or so, the first items are not um, super deep, so we can, we can always start with some of the, the first few items. Oh, except we are gonna talk about Darren Vice Chair, so. And possibly the water committee, um, although I have to check with staff because that's not agendized, so. Anyway, I shouldn't be talking about anything about the meeting yet, so I'll hold off.
Angela, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, did, did you see Richard today or yesterday?
Uh, no, but I'm anticipating that he's gonna be present at this meeting, I haven't heard otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Tom, let me ask you, all those trees in the back, are those in your backyard?
Yeah. My fake backyard.
It's really nice. Oh, he lives up on Berry Road and has all kinds of manicured trees.
Trying to find which trees, I don't think those grow around here.
Oh.
I want a background too, so where, where, where do you, I should, I've never played around with that in WebEx, only in Zoom.
Yeah.
How do you do it? They do it in WebEx.
You got a great background.
That's my fireplace.
And, and a front yard.
I figured it out in WebEx, just as you're going in, hit the little arrow off to the side. Then you gotta download.
Okay.
But I haven't figured out Zoom, before you go into Zoom.
Oh. You know, it's been a while since I used it, but Zoom, I think you can even get like different backgrounds, you may be able, able to customize them. Um, I, I'm kind of a Skype user more than a Zoom user, but yeah, I mean, it could be really fun, you could have like, you know, dancing giraffes or something in the background, or.
I've seen people do some amazing things already, I just didn't know how to do it, yeah. But, good, that's, keep trying.
Well, I want the.
I have to do it in real time, you know, I'm kind of a muscle memory, but I'll send you when I, uh, I'll go in. I have a piano lesson every week, so um, I use Zoom for that.
Who's teaching you? Who's teaching?
Excuse me? Well, she's a lady in Grant's Path, and uh, yeah, I just started taking lessons, I was learning on my own, and it's been really helpful, so, anyway, we do it via Zoom. Huh, well guys, what do you think? Shall we? Wanna give Richard a few more minutes, or shall we go ahead and get started?
Oh, look at. Richard and um, this didn't get on his calendar and he forgot about it, so he's gonna, he's gonna jump on, so he'll.
Oh, okay. Oh, awesome, okay. All right, so nice background, Richard, I could have shown a real one of those, a few weeks ago, I was in Florida. I was doing these calls from Florida, and it was uh, what, let's see, we started at nine o'clock at night, and I would get off at about 11 or 12. And so if I was a little loopy, that was why. But the weather, oh my gosh, was just beautiful. Okay, just filling some time here.
I'll be right back, since I have a second.
So he picked up his packet, Angela, but didn't remember the meeting?
I think he picked up the packet, I didn't check them today.
Are you leaving? Erin?
No, it's dinner time, and they're gonna be so kind and bring me a plate.
Oh, that's nice.
I always eat my dinner, it's the right on smack dinner hour.
I'll mute so nobody has to hear me chew. And I promise not to speak with my mouth full.
My husband was supposed to be doing dinner, but I, I don't, I, the kitchen happens to be right here, and I'm not seeing any activity. So I guess I'm having tea.
So do you do the cooking too, Erin?
Oh, we rotate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you having for dinner tonight?
Uh, I'm not sure, I think it's a sausage and peppers, bratwurst and peppers, I believe, it smells like.
Oh wow.
So, yeah.
Isn't that the new guy's job?
Exactly.
It's a good thing we don't have smell-o-vision.
Right?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, you're the best man, thanks.
Oh, look at that.
With, yeah, and a cookie?
No, uh, no cookie.
No.
But I, I did buy ice cream earlier today, I'll be honest about that, so.
Lynn, Lynn started today, it's Ash Wednesday.
So I believe we have, uh, may have one member of the public on the call, and I do apologize, we just would really like to, you know, have all our members present, so please stand by, probably get started in the next four minutes or so. I've been hearing a lot of Coast Guard activity today, does anybody know what, is there anything going on? That anybody knows about? I think we got a helicopter out there right now.
Maybe the Coast Guard's looking for Richard.
Access on TV?
Good one, Eli.
Is Access Humboldt on TV? Eli, Eli, I think he's muted.
Yeah, I, I didn't know you were asking me. Yeah, Access Humboldt is accessible through the internet, I believe on YouTube.
I think she's asking if, if we're being recorded by Access Humboldt.
Yeah, yes, we, we are.
Okay, uh, video as well as audio, or?
And then they show it later?
Well, it, it actually can be seen now, uh, and it can be seen later, so whichever the people prefer.
Okay, and do we, we're, I hope we start that when the meeting starts, or otherwise we probably bored people to tears for the first 10 minutes.
Yeah, I, I think it's, the recording is going on, Angela's on there, she might have better info, but usually they started like uh, between a half hour before and a quarter before, at least they get it going, but then later on, they'll, they'll tweak it.
Yeah, I jump on about 5:30, and I think I saw them pop on about 5:45.
Okay, all right, well, good to know, thanks for asking Diane, I thought the recording started when the meeting started, so. It'll be interesting, okay, our chit-chat, pre-meeting chit-chat. All right, we have a quorum, uh, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, February 17th, 2021, the City of Trinidad Planning Commission meeting. And we, as always, will start with a roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Kelly.
I'm here.
Commissioner Johnson.
He's muted.
I see him.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Stockness?
Present.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hakinen, is that how you say your name?
Nice, perfect, well done, yes, present.
I'm sorry, my uh, my mute button is a little laggy, but I'm here, thank you.
Thanks, Richard. All right, there are no minutes uh, to review this evening, so we're gonna move on to approval of the agenda. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any comments or suggested changes to the agenda as it stands?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, okay, I see no, seeing no changes, we're gonna move on to items from the floor. And as usual, I'll read my little blurb, um, at this time, we offer members of the community an opportunity to come to the podium, and in this case, to raise their hand, uh, or speak for a three minute, up to three minutes, to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Uh, please note that pursuant to the Brown Act of California, the commission is not allowed to discuss at length, um, or offer more than a brief comment on those items, or a question, um, on things that aren't on the agenda. But with that, let me open it up to public comments, uh, for items from the floor. Yes. Councilman Quompis.
Yes, I just wasn't sure whether there might be an opportunity to talk about the water committee tonight. I know it's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to, to at least ask the question of how that might be structured, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, staff, is it, uh, are we okay to potentially talk about that when we talk about sort of chair and vice chair, you know, roles on the planning commission, or is that something that needs to be agendized, does anybody know?
It's probably something that needs to be agendized, maybe we could talk about it briefly as part of council member staff's reports at the end. I didn't put it on the agenda because my impression was it was gonna go back to the council to actually adopt a, form the committee by resolution. So I was waiting till it was actually official, um, maybe I was off on that assumption, but.
Mr.
Well, the proposal at the last meeting was to include two councilmen, two planning commissioners. Um, so if anybody is interested, you can start thinking about that.
Well, it's on one of the, um. Let's see, number three, the item three on our agenda is 2021 projects and priorities, so. I figured we'd talk about this list.
You're right, water planning is on that list, you're right, so we could talk about it as part of that, yeah.
So there you go, Richard, I was gonna mention something, so.
Thank you.
If that's legal, then we'll do that.
All right, perfect. Other comments, items from the floor? Okay, seeing none, uh, we're going to move on, um, and I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. The first agenda item tonight is to welcome our new planning commissioner, Erin Hakinen. And Erin, I wanted, did I say it right?
I hope, you did, nicely done.
Excellent, thanks Trevor for leading the way there. Um, I wanted to, would you like to introduce yourself to the commission and community members, uh, you're welcome to do so.
Sure, yeah, my name's Erin Hakinen, um, and uh, let's see, I moved to Trinidad a little over a year ago, maybe a year and a half now. Uh, from the Bay Area, I've got a brother who's been up there, he and his wife both went to HSU, they've been in West Haven for gosh, over 20 years, and I've always loved the community and uh, have always just kind of peaked at real estate up there and found this uh, great opportunity, and moved into town, and we've been very happy here, and looking forward to giving back to the community.
Well, we're thrilled to have you, welcome.
Thanks.
And, and I also.
I'm glad to have him as a neighbor.
Yeah.
And Erin is on the volunteer fire department and could probably put a plug in that we would like to have more people to join.
Always, yes.
Sounds good, all right, I also wanted to recognize that Diane Stockness, who's been serving on the commission since I believe 2012, is that right Diane? Just signed up for another tour of duty.
I think it's 2013, 2013.
2013, yeah. So fabulous tenure of service, thank you Diane for, for re-upping with us. And then I would also be remiss not to mention that um, our second newest member of the team, Tom Hopkins, has also, I believe, yes, renewed his membership. Okay. All right, so um, thank you everyone, and uh, moving on then to our second item for this evening. This is the election of chair and vice chair to the planning commission, so Commissioner Stockness brought this up in our February 4th meeting. Uh, and then our city planner, Trevor, has provided the municipal code related to the item in this packet. I did, um, just as point of fact, I just wanted to mention that I have now served as the chair of the planning commission for a year, since January of 2021, when I took over from John Graves. Um, okay, so Trevor, did you wanna walk us through this, or?
Yeah, thank you, I didn't realize that, when I looked back at my records, I guess I didn't write a memo about it um, in 2020, so the most recent memo I could find was in 2018, so I, I was thinking um, that's when we last did this, so. You know, we, somewhere we, along the line, we got off, so we should probably be on the, you know, same cycle as the election cycle. Um, I'm not sure the best way to get back on that. The elections are for a two-year term, so I think we could technically say that we don't need to do this for another year. Um, but one of the things we struggle with when, whenever we get to this is that um, the chair is not allowed to serve more than once. And we often have new planning commissioners who maybe aren't quite ready to be chair yet. But it's kind of forced that way because of the language, and I'm, I'm not sure what the purpose of that language is, there's not a similar requirement for um, you know, the mayorship at the council level. Um, so to me, it seems like we might consider recommending to the city council that they um, do away with that ordinance, it's not part of the LCP, so you know, it's nothing that would have to go through the coastal commission, it's just something that council could, could adopt by ordinance if, if they choose. Um, so I, like I said, I'm not um, totally sure how to proceed here, um, because like I said, I think Cheryl is still good technically for another year, but how to, you know, you know, people change during the election cycle, so it'd be better if we were on that cycle. At, at some point, I just don't know the best way to get there, so I'm, I'm open to um, discussion on that.
Go ahead Diane.
Well, I, I'm glad that Cheryl has only been on one year, so I am gonna nominate her for another year. And I would like to take this ordinance to the city council, I was gonna try to find Jack West today, but I had a couple out-of-town people drop in with masks, um, so I think, I'm not really in favor of the um, ordinance. You know, because of the availability of volunteers and the new people, so I would say, let's take this ordinance to the uh, city council and say, okay, let's, do we really have to do this? Because you're not doing this for mayor and mayor pro tem. I think two years is fine, and then changing every two years, but I don't think today's is the day to change. And Richard, are you vice chair?
Uh, currently, I'm vice chair, yes.
Okay, so I would nominate Richard for vice chair too, just so we go through another year, and then we have time to talk, have the planning, I mean, the city council look at the um, ordinance about not being able to serve again. Because the background that Richard has, I, if Cheryl wasn't gonna do it, I was gonna nominate Richard, because we need his background to get Tom and Erin into all these items that we have, because we have the general plan and the water issues, and a lot of public comments. And we've had that for a couple years, okay, so.
Thank you.
Angela, take my motion. I'm done.
Um, so do we wanna have a little further discussion first, why don't we have further discussion, and then we'll, I guess, at that point?
Okay.
Yeah, procedure-wise, I'm just trying to figure out if, or do we go to a, a motion approval, but Commissioner Hopkins, I believe your hand was up next.
I, I, it's, it could still, a person could still be voted out, though, if they, like after two years, then they could be voted out. And what we're really talking about is just getting rid of the fact of not being able to be re-elected, correct? Then I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, I, I, and Commissioner Johnson, I believe you had your hand up as well?
Yes, um, I, I, I agree with Diane that this is something that maybe we should take back to the council. It's always been a little awkward, um, especially with uh, having new commissioners. And um, if there is any concern about the, I'll say legality of what we are doing tonight, uh, I would recommend that we just say that we have interim uh, chair and vice chair, and, and then we can take it to the council and, and formalize it, if there would be any concern that we were doing something that was not legal or whatever, uh, not per the, the ordinance, but yeah, I agree with Diane at this point, yes.
And I agree as well, I, I, I kinda like the two-year limit, um, because, you know, I think it's good to rotate, but, but we have run into that problem of, you know, it comes time for rotation, and, and we have to pick the newest person, so I like the idea that people who have been chair before can become chair again. And Commissioner Hakinen, I don't know if you have a, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the only thoughts I had on it, just looking through this, is um, some concept of a conditional term limit, so to speak, as that way, you know, and if there's no interest, then somebody can repeat, but if somebody else has interest and they're afforded the opportunity, uh, which might, I'm, I'm sure this was put in here for some reason, and then just a, a technicality question, if last year you were elected to a two-year term, do we need to have a motion tonight, or are you already on a two-year term and have another year of that to complete? And would that also go for the vice chair, I don't know.
Yeah, so I was um, appointed to the planning commission two years ago, and, and uh, and I guess, I, I guess it's called appointed by the commission as the chair one year ago, correct? So technically, yeah, I'm, my term is not up, of two years serving as chair, as all, you know. I mean, I think there's also an option in this for people to say, hey, if somebody else really wants to do it, you know, please speak up, and, you know, we, I, I mean, you know, people are, I'm flexible basically, but um, I'm happy to continue to finish out the year, another year, if, if that's what's desired. So yeah, I like the idea of two years, we kinda look at it, right? Cause you, you might, you know, we might decide we don't want somebody doing it for three, four years, you know, we wanna kind of mix it up and get different people leading, and yeah. I'm sorry Diane, I didn't mean to talk over you, were you gonna say something?
Well, there've been different planning commissioners that have lasted not even a year, couple months, and so, you know, because you. And so, you know, because you and Richard are very dedicated and Tom has done a great job. And now Aaron is brand new and he's ready to go. I just think that we should take my idea of keeping you one more year and Richard and then recommending to the council that they eliminate this rule. Look at it and then eliminate it because of the turnover, you know? And we just don't have a lot of volunteers.
All right, normally at this point, before going, I would open to public comment, but I don't see any public. I'm going to go ahead and open to public comment before we finalize this, just in case. All right, no public comment, so coming back to the commission. So I guess Diane has made a motion. Is there a second?
Or recommendation?
A recommendation, is there? Do we need a second then, Trevor, or do we just?
Well, so I think, I think maybe that I would suggest that no action is needed because one year ago you were appointed to a two-year term, so that's still good. I just didn't realize that when I put this on the agenda. And I apologize for that. And then I think maybe next year, when we do the elections, it should be for just a one-year term so that we can get back on the election cycle. And so that might be a good time to do that so that we get back on on that same, same time period.
That's a good idea, yeah. And I think Commissioner Hopkins had his signed up and the next, and then Commissioner Stockness.
Oh, I was going to second it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I just, I don't think the the council members are elected, I mean, they're every two years. Okay, so that's what you want to do, one more year and then get on with the same cycle the council members are on? Okay, now I get it. Thank you.
I, I, I agree with that. And I guess the other thing is, you know, i- if anybody, if I'm going to be doing this for another year, you know, please let me know if you have it. Send me email private or give me a call. If you, you know, if there are things you want to see different, you have questions, you know, you can always reach out. I'm perfectly open to, if if things have been going well the past year, I'll just keep doing that. But if you have some suggestions or ideas, let me know, because we can always improve going forward. So I guess that's, we're going to continue on then. All right? Okay, thanks, everyone. The next item is a continuation of our discussion from February 4. This is on our projects and priorities. And the city planner, Trevor, has, I guess I don't have to say city planner because we have no public on this moment. But anyway, Trevor has taken another pass based on feedback from that meeting. And she has listed out sort of first, second, and third tier priorities. And at last week's council, city council meeting, I just wanted to mention, too, that Tom Davies had asked for a review of the status of the general plan as well as for this list of priorities that the planning commission is working on, which is fantastic, because that's exactly what we had, we had hoped to do. So after we run through it tonight, Trevor will give us the staff report first, but and we'll go through this. But after we run through this, then that will go back to the city council and the mayor so we can hear, you know, kind of if they're in agreement with our overall strategy. Okay, Trevor, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you for that introduction that really covered most of it. Cheryl and I also met in between the last meeting and talked a little bit about these things. I provided a little bit more detail as to some of the steps that are required for these different projects. Really, the priorities I focused on were the general plan, obviously, as an ongoing and important project that we all want to get through, and then the SB2 grant task. So that's a fair amount of money and some big tasks, and we have to get through it this year. So so those are really my primary top-tier priorities. There's also the OPC grant that's going to be coming up that will start some of the public outreach and some of the risks, continuing the risk assessment. And then obviously, there's development applications. So I'm going to try and get three applications on on next month's agenda. So that's going to be pretty full with just applications. So we might want to consider having a, we do get an extra week between the March and April meetings. So that would make a good time to consider having a special meeting to talk about ongoing things like the general plan update. The other thing I have in the top priority is developing it for staff anyways, developing an ordinance for the water shortage contingency plan. So that's not something that will go before the planning commission, but it's something that will take my time. And and it's something that, you know, we want to get in place before the next dry season. So and then second-tier priorities are the LEAP grant tasks. So those have a little bit longer timeline. Some of the tasks were supposed to start in 2021 and and we might be able to get some of those started. But that grant goes into 2023, so I think we have a little bit more time with that. The OPC grant will continue on. The STR ordinance update is certainly a priority for for some members of the community, I think. And we did get a public comment letter related to that. It brought up a lot of issues and concerns. But I, my impression was that part of the purpose of the STR committee was to sort of flush those out so that the planning commission didn't have to do all that work. And again, you know, staff hasn't, as far as staff is concerned, things are working pretty well. I did send a memo to Eli and to the city attorney, sort of outlining the STR committee's recommendations and my thoughts on how those could be implemented through the administrative rules. So the ordinance does allow the city manager to enact administrative rules to help implement the ordinances. Certainly, things like adding fines to the Good Neighbor brochure and contract, those are easy to implement administratively. And I think almost all of those recommendations can be implemented administratively because we, we're already too late to amend the ordinance and get it through the coastal commission, have it in place for this summer anyway. So the only way we could implement those recommendations this, this season would would be through those administrative rules. I, I was thinking of starting the ADU ordinance soon. But in looking at the grant a little bit more closely, I've started amending it and looking at consistencies with existing state law, which has changed. But then it's supposed to go through a consultation process with coastal commission and Department of Housing and Community Development before it goes to public hearing. So I think the ADU ordinance for public hearings will not be for a few months because I want to get some, some agency input on that. So that might leave room to to jump into the STR ordinance. But again, I think we need to be careful that that doesn't take over. You know, what, all these other things that we're working on and doesn't take away too much for that. So, you know, consider, you know, limiting it somehow in terms of the scope or how much time we spend on it at each meeting or how many meetings we spend on it, something like that. The water, water planning I have as a second-tier priority because I'm not sure exactly what the staff commitment for that will be. So that's a little bit up in the air. But as, as Richard and others brought up, the city council has indicated they are going to form a water committee. And it's going to include two council members, two planning commissioners, as well as as several others to look at sort of water security and water resiliency planning. And the city's still waiting to hear back from a test on a technical assistance grant that we submitted to help us with that. So that would be great if that comes through. So, yeah, for the next meeting, assuming that the council is going to adopt that resolution at their next meeting, we will want to, the planning commission will want to appoint a couple of members to that. So I'll put that on the agenda for for the next meeting. The third-tier priorities are things that can kind of be put off without, out too much trouble. You know, the OWTS program is something we keep putting off. And and I, I don't want to put that off too much longer. But on a staff level, I'd like to work with Eli to try and put together a plan to, you know, re restart that. You know, probably sending out some correspondence and stuff before we really jump into it. But I do have someone in my office who's, who's interested in working on that. I did put together a few potential agendas and a Gantt chart. You know, things are, these kind of things are always subject to change. But it sort of gives you an idea of what our workload for this year is going to look like.
All right, thank you. Let me open it up. Commissioner Johnson?
Trevor, I'm, I'm, I'm just questioning and 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 hopefully you can help me understand. It's my understanding that the ordinances need to be completed before we can submit the general plan to the coastal commission. So with that in mind, while I understand that maybe it's not as high a priority as getting the, the actual general plan complete, it seems to me that that's still very important and is going to be the long, long pole that is going to have to hold up the tent. So what's the rationale for putting that at a lower priority?
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I, it was higher on my priority list. It's just I don't see that we can really fully delve into that this year because of these other grant tasks that we need to complete if we're going to spend that money. Some of the SB2 grant tasks do include ordinance updates. So like residential design standards, so design review findings. I have done some updates. Some updates are going to have to wait for the general plan because we don't know what they're going to look like. And, you know, realistically, working with the coastal commission, the general plan is still, you know, the city might adopt it this year, hopefully, might be nice. But then the coastal commission, there's definitely going to be some back and forth with the coastal commission. And during that time, we can continue to work on the zoning ordinance update.
So basically, we're saying that the, the, the general plan's middle to the coastal commission is still probably a year and a half away.
Yeah, I, I hate to say it, but yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think realistically.
I just thought it was important that, you know, in terms of transparency, that it'd be clear. And I think that's a message that we need to send back to the city council as well.
Yeah, that's a good point because, as I mentioned earlier, there was a request for us to give an update on the general plan. So you're, you're right, Richard, that would be a good thing to bring, you know, to mention is the timeline we're running on right now. And I think, just given the past history, 18 months is maybe optimistic. But, yeah, maybe sometimes, maybe sometimes the next two years would be good. Other comments on priorities and projects? Otherwise, I'll jump in. All right, I don't see any yet, but please raise your hand if you have some comments. So I was just thinking, Trevor, that maybe the, if we pass this to the city council, that we put the top priorities categories first. So you, you outlined them in your note to us, and I thought that was good because we talked about, you know, the general plan, the, you know, spending the grant money, the water planning and the processing of applications as our top priorities. I'm not sure that I just, that that's in rank order there, but those were definitely the four that I heard in our last meeting. And then I guess the other thing I might do differently is for submitting, submitting this or moving this on to the city council would be separating out a little bit some of your tasks and priorities, Trevor, from the planning commissions. So for example, and I don't know if this is a great example, but the parking study as, as the first one, as a priority, as a top-tier priority, we actually won't see it in the planning commission, I believe, until toward it, more towards the end of the year. Is that right? Or next fall, right? So, so maybe we say, maybe that's not a number one priority for the planning commission, at least at this time. Whereas, you know, the general plan, the ordinances, that Commissioner Johnson just mentioned, might be. And I guess the only thing I'd also mention is the OWTS program. I guess I would second, I had written down priority one or two. That's long been something that I've been passionate about because it, you know, the, the problems with the septic systems lead directly into the bay and create, you know, pollution issues. And that's something I, I love that we've been working on that. So I'd love to see that moved up the priority list. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's it for me. Commissioner Stockness? Oh, you're on mute, Diane?
Yeah, I got it. So Trevor, congratulations. This is a really nice outline. I like the way you did the tiers and the, put the projects and priorities. And I think it'd be a good idea to give this to the council members. What do you think, Richard? Richard Kompas, what do you think?
I think that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, because they, they get kind of the tail end of different things or the middle of something, and it's their job. You know, we do a lot of work for them. So I was just, you know, going to commend you on that. My first comment is the parking study. Cheryl, there, I don't know if you saw it online, but she has a bunch of questions for how to do the parking study ideas. And it will have to start, you know, now or next month in order to get all the data, you know? And I like the way, Trevor, you had, you know, look for some volunteers besides, you know, the people on the planning commissioner, the council that are going to do that. And then, let's see. So it seems like all of these, the, you know, doing the design, looking at the design things, the ADU, the housing is all, you know, part of the housing. You know, the affordable housing that the state wants. So if we continue working on that. But I am also, like Cheryl, concerned with the OWTS, the, you know, the septic. Because the people that were walking with me today want to be hooked up to water from the city. And they want to know why a lot of the septic tanks aren't being redone. And they're not in the city property proper. They're up West Haven. So I'm just bringing that up, that they were concerned about that. And, you know, they, they want city water. And why didn't you do the feasibility? So I tried to explain that. And then talking about water, that the resiliency committee needs to include Steve Madrone. So Angela, put that in the notes, invite Steve to be part of the water resiliency committee. He has so much knowledge, and we've been talking about this, you know, water plan for, what, 10 months or a year? So I would like to see him, you know, along with the other people on that. And I think, you know, with the STR update, Eli can do some of the, I don't know, administrative process. But we need to get the Good Neighbor brochure on the website. On the website and the violations with the fines, the fine amounts and that way. I think, you know, Tom's always talking about the website. And I think that would be good for visitors, tourists to see, okay, this is how the rentals are are run. These are the. Fines or the violations and these are the fines and then it's it's right up there. Okay, um. What's Yee-Haw? In the Caretaker Residence Amendment.
You you don't read the news, Diane?
What?
You don't read the news?
Well, I read the paper.
That's um, so Yee-Haw is a commune that's up by the quarry, up Quarry Road, that's been there. Okay, gosh, probably decades.
I didn't know that's what it was called. I knew that there was a. I knew there was a common a comm commune, but I didn't know it was Yee-Haw and I don't go up that road back in the.
So the owner of that. Place bought the West Haven Church a number of years ago and it's been. I guess not a huge nuisance, but you know, it's. You know, some of it is private nuisance issues. There hasn't been a lot of violations, but. It's not zoned for residential use, it's zoned for public and religious and. You know, the owner keeps saying that he wants to have a church or a school, but I don't. You know, it's it's now been at least five or six years that he's owned that and. You know, the that zone allows for caretaker residence, but there's no, that's that's as an accessory use. So without a primary use.
Is that is.
Well, it's not an ADU because there's no primary use right now. It's vacant. So staff is a potential solution. I've talked about trying to define a caretaker unit and putting like a. You can have a caretaker unit without a primary use for six months unless you're pursuing an application for something. Just to try and prod him into. Doing something so that that property doesn't become the next Yee-Haw. You know, I I, you know, it might be a really easy ordinance amendment to process. You know, I I don't know how much of a priority it is certainly for some of those neighbors. But like I said, there there aren't a lot of, you know, the the violations have mostly been cleaned up. It's it's not an egregious kind of situation at this point.
Okay, and I wanted to tell you I like the the calendar map on the back. That's really, I'm visual, a visual learner. So I thought that was great and I my only other consideration is signs. We want signs in the city where to park trailers. Tray, some of the signs are covered up that say where the trails are and those two. Down by the old lighthouse, the bluff now, those benches are definitely gone. And there's two pathways that people that visit that park along the bluff use. But there are no no benches there anymore. Okay. Someone else's turn.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. Any other comments? Let me open up to public comments and Councilor Kompas, did you have a comment?
I I just wanted to follow up on the general plan update. Richard Johnson had mentioned that in order to pass that, you need to have ordinances done before you can pass that. Is that still correct?
So it's not that we have to have the ordinances done before the city can adopt the general plan update. But the Coastal Commission won't. Accept the general plan. For processing to certify it as part of the city's local coastal program until they have the implementing ordinances in place.
Okay, because ordinances take time to get passed and first reading, second reading, all that stuff. Perhaps you can work with Eli and I'd be more than happy to support of trying to shepherd it through the council in a timely manner. But if you need help with that, don't hesitate to reach out to me. Maybe I can be of some help just to get it on the agenda and get things moving. So it's not holding you up from getting your work done. I don't want that to be an impediment. It's a whole different level of complexity, so if I can be of any assistance to the planning commission, just let me know.
Thank you very much. That that will be helpful and and we have had in past discussions, you know, discuss sort of. We started sending the elements one at a time to the city council versus, you know, waiting to get the whole document done, which, you know. And just iterating and also understanding that the general plan is should be and is an evergreen document. So it's it's, you know, it's we're trying not to get, we're trying to get to good enough and not perfection at this point. So so that's kind of been our philosophy and and really appreciate any any help we can get from the city council. Thank you. Commissioner Hopkin.
Perhaps, Trevor, you could educate me a little bit, but isn't my ADU units, isn't that dictated by the state? And so basically, it's all set up and then we just see if the if they can pass it from parking and from septic. And but it's already in place, a lot of this stuff, isn't it?
Yeah, and you know, I, um, the person I I had reviewing the city's ordinance that they adopted. So the city did adopt an ADU ordinance in. Did I say twenty twelve or something like that?
Yeah.
To be compliant with with state law. And the Coastal Commission wrote a long letter asking for. Lot more information that we didn't have at the time, which was to to show that there's enough septic capacity, enough. Water availability and enough parking to support second units without impacting coastal resources. Once we, so now we've we've done our groundwater model and the groundwater study is part of the stormwater project. So we've got the wastewater information. We've done all these water studies in the last few years. We've got the water information. And then with this parking study, that should provide the last piece and so and state law has changed. So basically, we just need to update based on state law and. There's. It seems fairly minor so far, you know, parking is is one of the things where like you you can't require parking in a lot of situations for ADUs. And I, you know, that could become problematic, but that's something we'll look at with you with the study. And then the other thing that I think will be not necessarily dictated by state law because they don't require a city to allow what are called junior accessory units. But they allow for that and that's where you sort of carve out a. You know, very small kind of studio space out of an existing residence. And the Coastal Commission actually doesn't consider that development, so that, I think, is probably the most promising way to create new housing unit. Affordable housing units in the city, so we're going to add that to the ordinance. But it's going to have to, we have to send it to Housing and Community Development. So now state law requires that agency to review them. And then before we can implement it, it has to be certified by the Coastal Commission. So I need to consult with both those agencies and. I I think I've mentioned at a past meeting, it'll be it'll be interesting because. The the Coastal Commission is is has is sort of in in a little bit of a flux with that right now because they've never emphasized housing. But they're starting to. You know, understand that that's a state priority, so they're starting to look at that more. But I'm guessing that most of these second unit ordinances have not been enacted in the coastal zone because cities are just. They can comply with state law by enacting an ordinance outside the coastal zone. And so they don't bother with doing it in the coastal zone because they don't want to deal with the Coastal Commission. Trinidad, we don't have that luxury because we're all on the coastal zone. So we're we're stuck, so I it'll be it'll be interesting, I think, how they. How they deal with that.
Thank you.
I did also want to speak a little bit more about the parking study, so. Yeah, I I've put together some surveys that for, there's one for visitors, there's one for residents. And there's one for employees or businesses that are sort of a separate set of questions. And that's just to help inform the results of the study and, you know, we might not pick everything up when we're going out and counting the number of cars that are taking up parking spots. So just also to get people's impressions of where it's more difficult to park, when it's more difficult to park, what the issues are, that kind of thing. So Angela is going to help me get those formatted and get those on the website. And then we're going to put out an announcement in the Friday email newsletter to to get people to start filling that out. And then we're also going to try and start getting volunteers so. For doing the count. So the way this is going to work, I sort of divided the city. And really, we're just doing the main part of town, so not Berry Road or Seenic, but everything else. You know, west of the freeway, I'm starting to divide it up into four quarter mile. Stretches that and and we'd be looking at doing, so for each. Sampling event, it would be a weekday and a weekend. And we're going to try and do, you know, something winter, something spring, typical summer and then peak summer. So try and do four events, two days each, and then it'll be. You just go and count cars, you know, we'll probably do like a morning, a lunchtime, an early afternoon and sort of a sunset time. So four times during the day, you know, just walking a quarter mile and and counting cars. So if anybody wants to volunteer, it's not too much effort, hopefully, and but the more the merrier.
Go ahead, Diane. Sorry, I was on mute.
Yeah, I was on mute too. I think I volunteered last meeting. Yeah, and I've looked at the questions. So. We probably need to get July, I mean, August in there, Trevor.
Well, I don't want to wait too long because we.
Do you want to count?
We need the results of the parking study in in order to finalize the ADU ordinance.
Okay.
So I think I think if we get, you know, a late June, early July. Well, I want to do Fourth of July weekend as sort of the peak weekend and then and then I guess a late June. But it, but it, you know, I'm I'm open if we think we need a later, later July, early August.
They don't go home till mid-September or October.
Sure.
The visitors.
And and we can start putting the results together before we do the final surveys. So, yeah, I think that's an option. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, go ahead, Mr. Aaron.
A couple of questions and and please bear with me as I try to get up to speed and get educated here. Just a basic question, maybe Trevor, you can help me out. ADU ordinance bleed over and cross over to the STR concept and and where do those inter intermix? And then the other comment I had, just as far as the priority, and I, and this is amazing what you did here regarding the STR ordinance update. I mean, in my short time in town, obviously, and and everybody else's long tenures in town, I mean, this is a constant issue. You know, commuting back and forth to the Bay Area, I can express that there is a tremendous amount of pent up demand for people to get out of where they've been. And the reality is that's going to come to us up there, and so I just want to make sure that we're ahead of that. And if there's a way that it sounds like this maybe is already delegated to the STR committee to handle the bulk of that work, is that something we can at least just move up to that? First tier or something because it, my impression is it's something that's never going to go away, this this topic of conversation in in my short time here, I think I picked up on that okay. But so that was just kind of my comment on the on the priorities and then just yet is the question about ADU versus STR, is it kind of like a subset or how does that work?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I can probably speak complete sentences in in acronyms. So ADUs are accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
And then the STRs are the short term rentals, so.
Which could be an ADU or a primary residence, right?
Yes, that that's correct, and we do have some that are in ADUs. We have some that are in. You know, like a portion of a residence. So more like the Airbnb kind of thing. We could put limitations, for example, if you're going to allow creation of a second unit that it can't be used as a short term rental. The state does allow that, so that's something we can consider. You know, we did, just a little bit of background, we we did spend a number of years developing an ordinance. And then a year or two later did another one with a cap. So there are some caps on on the number of STRs in residential zones. And I just found out there's actually now available licenses under the caps already. And so we we have to talk about, you know, how to hold the lottery because there are people on the waiting list. So, you know, in in staff's mind. The ordinance is working. I, you know, I think it's got a lot of great things about it, but obviously, there are people who still are not satisfied. And I think a lot of that comes down to enforcement, which isn't necessarily something we can fix in the ordinance itself. It's more of a. You know, an institutional issue, but but certainly there are things that, you know, people, some people advocate, for example, for only allowing. A resident STR, so you have to be a resident. And you can only have an STR for a portion of the year or in a portion of your house, for example. So but what I'm worried about is it. It took up, it was so intense when we developed that ordinance, I think it was thirty three meetings. That we worked on that, and so if we did that again, we won't get to any of these other priorities. So that's that was my concern.
And would that be the case even if that's kind of parsed out to the STR committee and they just simply report back or is that work kind of been done? I know I'm trying to play catch.
That's a good point. So the the council formed an STR committee to kind of. Look at these issues and make recommendations to the city, and so they did just make some recommendations in their annual report. And so again, those were, those seem pretty minor to me and that we can implement administratively like. You know, setting certain fines, putting the fines in the brochure, these other kind of things that I don't think require ordinance amendments. But some people think that that's, I I don't know exactly what's going on with the STR committee, whether they. They didn't decide what recommendations that, you know, they didn't explain what recommendations they didn't make and why. So I don't know if that was discussed at the STR committee and they said, no, we don't want that. And, you know, some some people just aren't satisfied with with that, so. But yeah, I think the intent was that the STR committee would would sort of deal with that and take it off the planning commission's plate.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. I think we are ready to move on. Trevor, do you have what you need from us on, we had a lot of discussion about the priorities, but I think overall, we're we're in pretty good shape with this list. So do you have any other questions, I guess, is what I'm asking?
No, I think I got some good guidance. I I think an introduction was sort of the general categories and and reasons why certain things are priorities. And then maybe sort of separating somehow staff work versus planning commission work. And then. Moving maybe the zoning ordinance update and the OWTS program out of the third tier priorities. I was debating whether we should just eliminate third tier priorities and everything's just one or two. Something else came up that I thought could maybe be a third tier though. Oh, the signage, sign, yes, so we've talked about signage a lot. You know, that could be another sort of future priority, but something we can put off for now. You know, that could be another sort of future priority, but something we can put off for now that I would sort of put in that third tier. Is there any anything, did I miss anything there?
I don't think so. Anybody else? I see no other hands or comments, so.
Yeah, Eli. Eli would like to comment.
Go ahead.
As far as as far as mentioning signage, the city council would like to address putting up signage for around the city indicating that no overnight parking. And and especially, I mean, basically, no, no people staying overnight in their vehicles, that camping in your vehicle overnight would be prohibited. And at the same time, part of the concern is that some people say, you know, we need signs all around the city addressing that. Other people say we don't need signs all over the place. So it's it's just like, how do we get the message across? But at the same time, minimize having signage where it would get too, you know, too prevalent in the community. So as a result, the council would like to have that addressed for this summer. And and then somehow, if the planning commission can weigh in on how that might be achieved, even if it's just focusing on that particular portion of the issue rather than getting into the whole signage ordinance. But I I thought that that would be helpful for the city council if you could somehow address that.
Okay, that's good to know. I did my pitch a few meetings ago for a signage master plan, even though I didn't want to necessarily put more on our plate as a planning commission. But, you know, we're kind of in need of a master plan for the city overall for signage because of what's happening is we're just putting up more signs, different signs, same with the trails are are the same, you know, where we just have, we actually end up with more signage than if we just had a master plan and consolidated some of our signage around certain categories. So that's my my pitch for that. But whether or not we have the time and the bandwidth to take it on is another whole topic, so. Commissioner Johnson.
So I cannot remember the year in which we did it. But Trevor, you may recall that we did attempt to do a master plan for signage in the city. It's been maybe eight to 10 years ago, unfortunately. But there may be a lot of good nuggets that can be mined out of that that fairly fairly significant effort that we we did. We did a complete audit of all signs in the in the city and categorized them. And unfortunately, we got bogged down when it came to trail signs. But you might, I'm just suggesting that you, there might be some things that are worth recovering from that original effort. And I can probably go back through my notes to find out exactly when it was, although you probably have it too, Trevor.
Well, I.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, go ahead, Trevor. So I was just going to say, I believe I requested that plan, and I can't remember right now, actually, if it was Angela or or Trevor that sent it to me, but I have that. I can't remember the date, I'd have to pull it up. But you're right, Richard, it's like, I don't have it in front of me, but it's a 20-page document, maybe 30 pages, with pictures and inventory of the signs. And last fall, and maybe we should save this for when we actually discuss this, but last fall, I walked around and looked at most of the signs that were in that in the city. I didn't go outside of the city limits, I just looked around and primarily trail signage. But anyway, bottom line was, I believe it was done maybe 10 years ago, maybe 2013. Nothing had changed, basically. I mean, I looked at, yeah, the signs are pretty much all still there. Some of them are more faded and more dilapidated, but but pretty much that inventory is intact or is still valid. So it would be a good starting point for us. So anyway, so Trevor, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to mention to Eli, just so he knows. So, you know, that is a parking, overnight parking, camping as a coastal access issue. It's not going to be an easy process, I don't think. I do see that the city does have Chapter 12.18 Public Grounds says there shall be no camping or loitering on public grounds or in public buildings between dusk and sunrise unless a permit for such use is issued by the city council. So maybe that could be used to say that we we've already got this prohibition on on overnight camping on streets. But again, the Coastal Commission might say that that is conflicts with the Coastal Act potentially, and that it needs to be part of the city's LCP if we're going to implement it. And then, of course, signs have always been controversial and, you know, putting up a bunch of signs on public streets saying no overnight camping. I mean, the city has been trying to get rid of signs for years, so. I I just think that's a, it's more of a can of worms than it might seem on the surface. So just just to let you know.
Mr. Stockton? So Eli, sorry, go go ahead. I I don't see Eli, I feel like I want to respond, or no, but.
Yeah, if if I could for just a moment, all I wanted, yeah, all I want to say regarding what Trevor had mentioned is, yes, I I agree. You know, we need to somehow keep signage under control. And part of the process I thought we could address is maybe having like one larger sign when people enter off of the freeway by on Main Street that basically might list like three or four things, including, you know, no overnight camping. So that this way, we just get the message across, plus we haven't noticed that the police could enforce. But at the at the same time, we're not having the same thing repeated on every street.
Commissioner Stockton, you were going to say something, please. You're on mute again, Diane, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. We need the no overnight camping sign. And if the council's approved of it, or they have that sign, we need to put it up. And I like what Eli said, maybe three different things. People need direction, we have so many visitors every weekend and Monday. What President's Day was packed. So one sign is is going to be good. We'll start with that.
Okay, I'm going to move us on. We're in we're in solving mode, which is good, and there's a lot of passion around this topic, and so I'm looking forward to a deeper discussion. And I'm going to move us on to the after-the-fact permits, which is our next agenda item. And and then I'm going to check at 7:30 and see if anybody needs a break, so if that helps. Because I think the after-the-fact permits will be a fairly short discussion. So with that, Trevor, I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of guide us through this ordinance policy, pardon me.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I basically just wrote up a policy is modeled after the we we adopted for detached living spaces and kitchens. So it's kind of that same format. And I just sort of formalized what we talked about at the last meeting, that after-the-fact permits will be processed and held to the same standards as as for regular approvals, but that applicants may be required to provide evidence or studies documenting what the prior conditions were. Any work not approved through an after-the-fact permit will be required to be removed and restored. And then unless the planning commission determines there were extenuating circumstances, then after-the-fact approvals will be conditioned on the applicant paying double the permit costs, which may vary depending on the actual cost of processing the application.
Okay, I might ask Mr. Johnson first, since he brought this to our attention, if he has any comments on this. I thought it looked fine so far.
Yeah, fundamentally, I'm I'm fine with it. The only thing that I've been noodling on, and I don't really have an answer for it, is regarding how long into the work process someone may be before we would start forcing them to pay twice the amount of the permit costs. But I I, well, I I'll retract that. I think I'm okay with it right now. And and, yeah, I don't I don't see any any real problems with it. Thank you.
So just to clarify, Richard, do you mean, so if someone, you know, built one wall as opposed to four walls, do you charge them double on the entire permit cost or one wall's worth of approval? I, that's what you're getting at?
Yeah, you articulated it better than I did. Yeah, but that's that's kind of what I was getting at. You know, where where do we draw the line on on charging them beyond that? But and and maybe you have a solution.
I I don't, except that it does, you know, say that you can determine their extenuating circumstances. So if someone just did a little bit of work, you could alter that that condition.
I I I tend to agree with that. And I think every every situation is going to be a little different, there's no question about it. I think what comes to mind, of course, is the fairly significant type of of work without permits that was performed on the Residence on Scenic Drive that we looked at about a year ago. And that's what raised this whole issue. And there, that was pretty obvious, that there were no extenuating circumstances. So I I'm fine, and I I think this is a good good approach.
Okay, other comments? I see Commissioner Stockton.
So do applicants have to have a permit for a backhoe? Can you answer that, Eli or Trevor?
Well, what do you mean for a backhoe? Do you mean work with a backhoe or have a backhoe?
Work work with a backhoe.
So it's not, it's not so much about the equipment they're using, it's about, some is about the location. So certain, you know, close to the bluff or sensitive environments have, you know, more restrictions, but really, it's based on the volume. So if it's more than 1,000 square feet of surface area of grading or more than 50 cubic yards, they need a permit. So, you know, if they just one shovel full with a backhoe, no big deal. It's it's more based on volume or area.
So when they ask for a permit, that's in the permit, the the grading and the construction, and then that's definitely a backhoe. I mean, there've been two backhoes here this week, within a week. Actually, three, two at one spot and one at another one yesterday, so. I didn't know.
Could be, you know, right, right now, the city, it's a it's sort of a oversight in the city's ordinances, I guess I would say, that we don't require a separate coastal development permit for septic repairs. So often, a backhoe might be used for for doing work on a septic system, for example. And and hopefully, that was permitted by the county, I usually hear about those. And if it's a repair, you know, sort of like-for-like, no increase in capacity. We don't require coastal development permit. Coastal Commission staff have made noises about that. But certainly, if it's a new or a bigger septic system, they they should have a permit from the city for that.
So if you think it's something, maybe, Diane, that's, you know, looks like it's being done on a private property and not, it may not be permitted. And I know I, you know, I know I've sent emails to Gabe and Trevor in those instances and asked them if the person had a permit.
Yeah, and then last week, I did talk to Eli about it because one of the places under construction, they were backhoeing on Saturday and Sunday. Those were the main days that they were doing that. And he told me that it was, it's a noise issue. And they, if they're working between eight and five, those are the working hours. But, you know, they weren't working at night, so I just was surprised to see nine to five one day, or nine to four, and then eight to five. So I was curious.
Nine to five, five days a week.
Okay, thank you.
It is unacceptable.
I I think the grading ordinance does include a restriction on work on Sunday. I think it allows work on Saturday. I could see if I could find that real quick. But but I guess that's only if they needed a grading permit. I I don't know if it was work that required a permit or not. I mean, you know, a hobby hobby person can use tools, chainsaws, equipment, you know, whatever time they want, there's really not.
Yeah. So this sounds like something maybe we should take offline and 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 Eli and and Trevor can follow up with Diane on the specific circumstances of this. All right. Other comments or questions on the after-the-fact policy, any changes that we want to make? Commissioner Hakenett?
I just had a couple of questions. On the the first point, I didn't know if it was worth trying to make it more clear just about that the applications are evaluated on the current codes and standards and whatnot in effect at the time. The application is submitted, just kind of tighten that language up, so there's no interpretation or wiggle room. So maybe a little bit of opportunity there. And then and then on the fourth one, point four, under the standard procedures and conditions, at the end, when you talk about the cost, which vary depending upon, you have the actual costs to the city for processing. I don't know if there was an opportunity there to put something to the effect of the cost, which vary on factors or, you know, permit costs as calculated by the city. Because it's not, you know, having had a pulled a couple permits myself, you know, there's there's the processing fee for the city, but then there's also the rest of the permit fee based on the work you're doing, the square footage, that kind of stuff. So I don't want somebody to think, well, I only have to pay double the processing fee, unless that was the intent. But, you know, I I would think we wanted to get the double the fee for everything after the fact. And then is is it my understanding that if you're a day after and you go, oh, shoot, I should have pulled a permit, now you're on the hook for this whole thing, or because that's not in here either? I just didn't know what the expectation was from the city's standpoint.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of what what Richard was getting at. And I just, there are two different building or permit processes. So there's the building permit process, which is based on the the fee is based on the the cost of the project or the square footage or whatever it is. And that's all in the building code, as is the fines for after-the-fact building permit. So that's specified already in the building code. This is for planning permit, so more at the design stage.
Gotcha.
And so by the time it gets to the planning commission, if it's a planning permit violation, it's also usually a building permit violation as well, if they've done any construction. But but, yeah, I think that's what Richard was getting at.
It kind of gets at the question of the honest mistake or oversight by somebody new to planning or designing something versus, you know, an intentional mistake, or maybe I can get away with it kind of mindset.
Yeah, and I mean, one, it's it's hard to tell sometimes. And I think that could be part of the extenuating circumstances, but maybe I could add a sentence that the the fine part of the costs could could, the planning commission can sort of set that based on the amount of work that was completed or or the size of the the project that was completed or or you know, some of it has to do with the sensitivity of the law. of the location potentially.
I think, I, I think keeping it a little bit simple and straightforward is good. The extenuating circumstances gives us an opportunity to, to kind of weigh in on some of these things. But I guess the question too is an appeals process. So let's say somebody, um, let's say somebody, um, I don't know, you know, starts digging something and puts in one wall and then realizes, oh my gosh, I needed a permit. Now I gotta go get a permit. And so to, to the Commissioners Johnson and Hakenin's point, you know, gee, they're gonna get paid double fee and they've, they've just kind of made a mistake. Well, so that's extenuating circumstances, but let's say we, you know, they get billed for double the, the fee. You know, the appeal process, I assume, is they can say to the planning commission, hey, um, there were extenuating circumstances. Right? Or no? What do you guys think?
Well, once the planning commissions made their decision, they could appeal it to the council.
To the council, okay, right.
And, and fees too.
Yeah.
For example, the, the civic club, for example, um, with the lighthouse and some of that kind of work that they were doing, um, they went to the plant, the city council to request them to waive some of the costs, the fees from the planning commission. So, so yeah, uh, an applicant does have that, um, ability to go to the council and request, something like that to be waived or reduced.
Yeah, yeah. So Commissioner Hakenin's point about the calculation and the processing fees and, and that, I think is maybe good to add. Um, and then, and then I guess the question is Commissioners, are you, are you satisfied with extenuating circumstances? Or do you want to, do you feel like we should maybe add a little more language in here?
Well, one thing that we could do is just add what you said, Trevor, that, um, if there is a concern about fees, that the applicant can appeal to the city council. And then that makes it very clear that the planning commission primarily, or the planning commission is the primary decider of what the fees will be. And if there's a concern, then there is an appeal process.
Yeah, I think that's stating that, yeah, stating that outright is good. All right. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open to public comments. Um, Counselor Klopka?
Just a question. Um, I'm thinking that there's two outcomes. If someone, uh, starts construction without the proper permit, one, they get caught and they have to pay twice the permit fee, or they get caught and what they're doing is not according to what the planning commission would accept, they've got to rip it out and still pay double the permit cost to do it again. Is that right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, potentially, I think.
I hesitated because I wasn't sure about the doubling of the permit fees in that case. If we made them rip it out, it's a good question. Is that?
Yeah, but it's still, it's still a cost to the city, but then, but really the idea is that you don't want to make it advantageous for someone to start work without a permit. So there's not, so if, if their work got denied, now often though, like for example, um, this was quite a few years ago on Scenic Drive where they did a bunch of vegetation removal, they cleared along the stream, they built some trails down to the coastline. Um, and that was stuff that was not allowable. And it came to the planning commission, the planning commission did approve some of the work that could be approved and then, but for the rest of it, they actually had to come up with a restoration plan. And then they had to get a permit for the restoration work. Um, so, yeah, I think it would, might be worth mentioning, um, well, it does say after the fact approvals will be conditioned on the applicant paying double the permit cost. Denials, maybe I could add denials, they don't have to pay double the permit cost, but they still have to pay the cost to the city of processing the application.
Yeah, I, I just see it, and, and the reason they may want to do this without a permit is because it doesn't meet code, right? They're trying to cut corners. So they get caught, now they gotta pay double and they gotta rip it out and do it right. And just, just an example.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close, uh, public comments. Thank you. Uh, and, uh, return to the council or to the commission, uh, Diane, you had a comment? You're on mute, Diane.
I'm pretty sure it's in the county code. If you don't do something with the permit, then you have to, and they say to rip it out, you have to rip it out and you have to pay the fees. That's life. You know, we feel bad for them, but somehow they didn't get the right direction to get the permit. You know, if we go through a stop sign, we can't go to the officer and say, I'm sorry, we're gonna get a ticket. So I, it's just part of the, the process, these, and after the fact permits, I think you did fine, Trevor, writing the, uh, procedures and conditions. And, well, just leave it with extenuating circumstances and go from there. I mean, what did the Verizon company pay? Did they pay anything?
I don't know.
You mean AT&amp;T, when they took their pad out? Uh, I, well.
I know they graded it.
Yeah, I mean, that was such a small project. I can't remember if we conditioned that with extra fees or not.
Well, you know, there are people that will try to turn a sunroom into a bedroom without a permit. And, you know, even though this is a, that Verizon project was small, it's at the top of one of the most beautiful landmarks in the state, maybe in the world. So it's just, these are the rules, these are the consequences, these are the fees. I don't think the fees are that bad. After what we read from the last paperwork that you gave me, I didn't think they were that bad. All right, I'm done.
So, yeah, thank you. So I think, um, let me ask if there are any objections into where we stand right now is basically that the person would be asked to remove, uh, something that was, uh, non-compliant with the building code and pay double the fee, but they can, um, uh, appeal to the city council if they find that objectionable. I, I'm at peace with that at this point because I've seen some, um, pretty crazy stuff. Um, and I think most of the time, the stuff that I've seen, people knew. So I'm okay with keen giving them a fine. How about you guys? All right, anybody object? Okay, it looks like we're at peace with that and, uh, but they will have an option to, to come back and, and plead their case. All right, beautiful. So.
Trevor, does the building commission?
You cut out Diane, sorry.
You muted yourself in the middle of your sentence. There you go. One more time. There you go. Yeah.
Okay. The, um, building official would take these into consideration after the fact permits, too?
Yeah, so it's a little bit separate, but parallel process. But yeah, I work pretty closely with the building official and we make sure each of us get, get, um, referrals and that sort of thing. Um, just one thing I, I would suggest to make this formal, that, um, that somebody make a motion to adopt this policy with the added number five, that, that fees and other parts of the planning commission decision, um, can be appealed to the city council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome. All right. Okay, so it is, uh, 7:39, and I promised that I would ask everyone, would you like to take a break? We've got two more, uh, quick topics here.
Five minutes?
Yeah, sounds good. Five minutes, I will be back at 7:45. It's actually six. Give you a bonus minute. All right, I've got 7:46, so we're just got ready to get started. Let me just see where we're at here. All right, so our next topic is the general plan update, the continued discussion of a revised draft of the circulation element and responses to the coastal commission staff comments. And this is continued from the February 4th, 2021 meeting. I just realized Diane's not back yet, so let's give it a minute or two and then I'll ask Trevor for the staff report. Meanwhile, we can.
Sorry, I can't run down the street this time and knock on her door for us.
No, I know you can't.
A little further away than normal right now.
If she doesn't have us on mute, we can just say Diane, Diane.
While, while we're waiting, Trevor, um, I'm a little confused about item six. Um, there's no packet for this permit in the, in our packet?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion. So what happened is I went ahead and sent out notices. I have to send out notices two weeks ahead of the meeting. And so, but I didn't get everything I needed. They're, they're still working on an addendum for the geologic report and the coastal commission also indicated they want to, coastal commission staff indicated they wanted to comment. So I had to continue, but, but because I had sent out notices, I wanted it on the agenda in case someone was looking for that project. Um, but yeah, I don't have anything prepared for it yet, so it'll just, we'll, we'll just continue it.
Yeah, so apologies, when I said there were two items, it's really only, only one left, the general plan and then, uh, a diff role on that other topic, so. I have a question on half a quest, um, on item number six, since we're not going to talk about it then, but that might be, I, I, is this inside the city limits? I assume it is? Okay.
Yeah, it's the next to last property.
Oh, okay. Isn't there a 2,000 square foot limit? Isn't there a 2,000 square foot limit inside the city limits?
Um, it is a guideline.
I see. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to suggest that we go ahead and restart. And with, with the understanding that in this case, we're continuing an item from the February 4th meeting. And so Trevor has given the staff report, Diane was able to hear that, and she'll still be able to make her comments when she returns. And, and perfect timing, there she is. So, so with that, so Trevor, let me turn it over to you. We'll go ahead and kind of start on the circulation element, and then folks can weigh in that, you know, comments that they didn't get last time.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm, I want, I want to keep the general plan on the radar and on the agendas as much as possible. There, there will be some times where, you know, like, for example, the, the conservation element that, that the planning commission has kind of finished their last round with. I need to get the revised version and responses to comments back to the coastal commission, which I haven't quite had a chance to do. I'm close. But anyway, I'm going to try and keep the general plan on the agenda as much as possible. So in light of that, I, you know, I hadn't had time to do much more work on the circulation element since the last meeting. But I did notice as I was going through it, I, I did have some questions for the planning commission that we didn't necessarily specifically address at the last meeting, so I tried to highlight those in here. I do notice I have a couple of highlights that don't necessarily apply to the planning commission. So that was just sort of my ideas to go sort of look for the highlights and see if I can get some feedback from, from the commission on, on those questions.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to start with their feedback on some of these highlights? Otherwise, I can, I can kick us off, I guess. So I guess the first thing was on environmental justice. I was just looking there. I, I know it's highlighted in yellow. I didn't know if you wanted some comments about that, Trevor?
Yeah, I think that is one that we did talk about at the last meeting, and that, you know, we're all kind of in agreement that we're not going to have a separate, necessarily a separate section on environmental justice, but that I'm going to look for places throughout the general plan where, where that we might be able to add some policies. Trinidad doesn't have a, a, a population that, that would be considered underserved. But the coastal commission wants to make sure that, you know, lower income or minority groups have the same access, coastal access in Trinidad as, as anyone else. So, so I will look, I will look through the document for that.
Okay, yeah, and I did a little reading about this, and it, it's what I found about planning commissions specifically, some things that have been done in areas where they have environmental justice populations or neighborhoods. You know, things like imposing minimum lot size for development was one thing that has been an issue, and restricting multi-use housing, of course, so affordable housing. So any, anything we did that sort of restricted that, or, you know, where we said you had to have a, a minimum lot size or something might be, might be considered as orthogonal to environmental justice ordinances and building plans. I was looking on page four, your question about the planning commission, the city want to designate or encourage the county to designate any other scenic roads. The four that were mentioned were Scenic Drive, Stagecoach, Patrick's Point, and Edwards. I, I couldn't think of another one. Maybe somebody else has, has an idea about that, but those four seem like the right ones to me.
Although my, my recommendation would, would be to not have them officially designated, because it does add another regulatory layer potentially to that. For example, Highway 101 in Humboldt County is eligible to be a state scenic highway, but the county has chosen not to designate it as such, because then there's more restrictions on development along the highway. The Coastal Act places additional restrictions on particularly scenic areas. So, so that came from that coastal commission question, asking what the intent is. So, you know, I think my recommendation would be that we not designate scenic areas. We just mention them as being particularly scenic and, and clarify that that's all we're doing.
That, that makes sense to me. I didn't realize that there was a, you know, kind of a regulatory layer that came with that, that was maybe onerous. Unless there's, unless there's, you know, huge benefits that outweigh that, that layer of, of regulatory issue. Yeah, okay.
I don't know of any.
Okay, so no benefit, so the cost benefit isn't there, it sounds like.
We did talk about the roundabout issue. I have highlighted, um, page five. So we, so we did talk about that, and I'm going to look for a place to, you know, and, and if the planning commission has any suggestions for, you know, where to put something, you know, that we would, we would, you know, entertain the idea of, of roundabouts. We just want to convey that the city is not against them, as was implied in that Caltrans or Rancheria study.
Yeah, I mean, what you have here, that the solutions that have been discussed and decided upon, decided upon, seems to make sense to me as is. I don't, I think since there's been no formal review, it didn't seem like we should, you know, take that out as an option. It's just basically saying it's an option. But I'd be interested in what other folks have to say on that, and I think that's all I had. So, we'll turn it over to the other. So on the topic of parking there, sorry, on page 11, I did have a comment about the parking in Lou fee. So evidently, when developers, I looked it up, so that means that the developer pays a parking in Lou fee if they don't have adequate parking for something they build. And I guess my feeling was parking in Lou for us, it just seems like it would be problematic, and I was kind of in, in the camp of removing it, because I don't know how we would enforce it. It seems like parking comes at a premium here. People are concerned about parking. So if we had somebody, for example, who built a, a new shopping mall or something, and said, oh, I'll just pay the city a fee, and I don't, I don't need to have parking, I think that would be problematic, so maybe we don't even have the option. But I would like to get other thought on that as well.
So just to clarify a little bit, now, in, in Trinidad, it's only allowed in the plan development zone. And the idea is that the, most of those parcels, so for example, Trinity Street, most of the parcels along there is on plan development, which is basically a mixed use zone. You could have a, a house and a business, for example, or a business. But because those lots are already built and they're small, it would, having to meet the parking requirements in the ordinance would preclude them from having a business.
So is it new, so I thought it was just for new development, but, and we don't have very many spaces for new development. Is it, is it for existing development then too? Okay, well, that's a little bit.
And that's really the intent, so maybe that's, and, and maybe, so, and, and the problem with the in Lou fee has been that we don't have enough development to really support that kind of program. So, the, the city has required it in the past, and then it just sat around and no, no, no new parking was developed. So the idea was that would be that the city would then develop parking with that money. And it never happened, and so, you know, people complained about their fees and what it went to, and actually, the city ended up paying some of that back. So, so maybe a better process would be an exception process as opposed to an in Lou fee. The other thing I was thinking about is, you know, there has been talk recently about Hector Street. So that's a pretty wide right of way. The city has quite a bit of, of undeveloped right of way there, to the point that, like, parallel or angled, I mean, perpendicular or angled parking could be created there as opposed to just parallel on-street parking, so we could get more parking spaces there. So, I mean, if the city did have a specific plan like that, you know, maybe then it would be worthwhile doing parking in Lou. And, you know, the city might even consider just building that up front, and then getting paid back eventually through parking in Lou fees. That might be one way to approach it. So I, I just wanted to get some thoughts and input on, on that.
Well, I kind of like the building it and getting paid back, but I, what, I think it's hard to, yeah, it'd be hard to kind of take the money and then go figure out the plan, and it sounds like that's been problematic in the past. But I'd like to hear other folks' thoughts.
Could I interject, or are you just doing the commissioners?
Yeah, no, go ahead, Eli.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, having a variety of options would be fine. So this way, we don't really box ourselves in, so that if the opportunity arises along Hector Street, you know, we could do, use the in Lou fees. Otherwise, you know, possibly, you know, some other area could be suggested or, you know, or proposed, or maybe might exist with someone who is developing. I mean, you know, maybe they might have some other thoughts where something could be done, where they could locate parking other than where it currently would be, and, you know, where, where their parcel is. So anyway, I'm just saying, if we have more options, it might be helpful that, you know, we can come up with some more solutions to our parking issues.
Okay, great, thank you. Other thoughts, commissioners?
The parking study. Okay, unmute.
I can hear you. You're, you're good. Oh, now you're on mute.
Just here. Well, the parking study should help define some, right, Trevor?
Well, that's really gonna just look at pressure on existing parking spaces. So not necessarily, you know, whether there are other parking opportunities. It's not, although one thing I am noting as I'm counting parking spots is the encroachments. You know, like, along Ocean and View in particular, people have landscaped out into the street, and so they've taken up the parking on the street. And, and I think that's something that the city should address. But I don't think the parking city is really going to inform the in Lou fee particularly.
Well, I'll be looking at those little things that you just talked, talked about to tell the city, because Eli knows that I'm at the city talking about the vegetation, and I've gotten another, two things on my list. One's about sidewalks, and then there's another one on parking. Some people use the street for vehicles they're not even using, you know, off-street parking. And I don't know. I, I thought everybody got two parking spaces. So my other, one of my comments, Eli, aren't we doing something right now for parking and curbs? Isn't it out to bid?
Yeah, along Trinity Street, and it's really not so much of the parking as it is the ADA improvements, mostly along this, with the sidewalks and the driveways. And then part of it also goes to Patrick's Point Drive and the Scenic Drive, but again, just dealing with the ADA issues.
Okay, is that in the plan, Trevor?
What plan?
In the general plan, in the circulation element about the AD.
Yeah, that is, one of my questions a little bit later on is, is there, there are some conflicting policies where some talk about there should be street improvements, and then some policies that say street improvement should be minimized to maintain the rural character of the town. And so, one of my ideas was maybe we should specify that the, the collector routes, Main, Trinity, Edwards, should have things like sidewalks, maybe traffic calming types of things. But that the local streets, Underwood, View, Ocean, should remain, you know, they, they shouldn't have the sidewalks and.
Well, there's no room. There's not really room.
Part of it, yeah.
The what, the white lines are like the sidewalks, you know, inside the white lines on View and Ocean are on the sidewalks. So I had.
Those are, those are 40-foot right of ways, so theoretically, there would be room. It's just that people have encroached on, on that right of way.
There would be room for parking?
And sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah, well, they are parking there. They're parking inside the white lines, most of them, not, not all of them. So I, I'm going to go to air quality and greenhouse gases.
I just had a question for Eli real quick.
Okay.
Regarding the, the parking in Lou. I like that you have any options. What would preclude anybody from just saying, well, I'd rather just do the in Lou for every project?
I, I'm just saying, in the general plan, leaving that opportunity for the city, not necessarily up to the developer. So that we, we would say that, you know, that the city can approach a variety of different ways to resolve that. And, and then we probably would take it more on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, depending on the use, you know, we may need a certain amount of parking spots right by that use. And therefore, we wouldn't go with the in Lou. But maybe some other use, it might be like, well, that, that's possible. Maybe there's other parking spots available that are close by that would help mitigate the issue.
Okay, thank you.
And I can add to that, too, that those kind of details would be specified in the zoning ordinance. I don't have the language of the existing regulation right now, but I think it is, you know, only in cases where, where parking can't be met because of existing development. So, you know, the places on, on Trinity Street, for example, because it's, like, if they had a retail establishment, the number of parking spaces are based on the square footage. Um, like if they had a retail establishment, the number of parking spaces are based on the square footage and so. Um, and it would be difficult for them to get more than a couple of spots. Um, whereas if someone were to develop, develop the lot behind Murphy's. Clearly, there's plenty of space for them to incorporate the required parking. So it wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed in a case like that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, other comments, questions? Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
So, uh, just, just to comment on what we've already covered. Um, in looking at the environmental justice issue, um, I I think. I I look at this as more than just a circulation issue. It's a housing issue. It's, it's, it's much, it's a much broader topic and I I think we need to address it. And should address it. Uh, but I'm not sure that it it is. That we need to specifically talk about it in this particular element. It might be better if that was included somewhere in, for example, like an introduction or. Land use or I I don't know, but it 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 just seems to me that, uh, it's a broad enough. Topic that it it needs a little bit more than just a a reference here. Um, the, the other thing that I wanted to just mention is, um. I know we haven't talked about it yet in public transit, but I'm just kind of, you know, cloud nineing this whole thing. One of the things that we talk about is, uh, we talk about public transit and then we talk about alternative. Uh, methods of transportation and and I think the the approach. Today, if you will, is it, it's more holistic than trying to separate them. And what I mean by that is, you know, everybody's in, uh, investing a huge amount of effort in bike trails, walking trails as alternative. Uh, alternative methods of transportation. And with that in mind, um, we talk about in under transit policy. Circ three dot one, where we say work to improve and expand regional bus service via the Humboldt. Transit Authority. Now, I know we're talking specifically about bus service. That is true. But I think that a broader uh, organization that should be looking at this, and I mentioned, I think, last week, and we did change, I think. Um. On the next page about HCOG, but I would even make it a little bit broader and define HCOG as the reason, regional transportation planning agency. Which is what it is. And uh, that captures, I think, then the essence of all the, all of the transportation elements. Uh, including the alternative transportation, uh, 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 methods. And um, I'm not sure exactly how to reword this whole thing, but maybe if if we just identify HCOG as being the RTPA. Um, that, uh, that might help kind of, uh, bind everything together a little bit better in my mind at least.
Yeah, that, I'm glad you said that because I I was kind of plugging in bicycles and a bunch of stuff. And then I realized that that's actually covered in. Uh, three point four one or whatever it is. Yeah. And so having it all under one umbrella would be nice.
Yeah, and I was actually gonna suggest that as well because Trinidad doesn't have its own public transportation system. So these policies are pretty. Loose because we can't dictate what, um, you know, the regional transportation system does. So. Um, I was gonna suggest the same thing and that a lot of those public transit policies would then probably be other initiatives since the city doesn't really have control over that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Is there anything in there, anything we should put in here about like ride share, like somehow encouraging? Ride shares or, because I was trying to think, you know, from an environmental standpoint, even if people don't take public transportation or ride bikes. They could, you know, we could kind of promote, uh, sharing and Aaron sharing and things like that. I don't know.
Park and ride.
Yeah, like.
Well, we had a park and ride sign.
Yeah, I mean, we have the park and ride. And so I'd, and you know, post COVID, I could see a scenario where people could, you know, kind of say, hey, I'm going to Eureka. You want to ride along kind of thing. Because there's a lot of back and forth that goes on where people don't take buses and. Um, anyway, an airport shuttle, maybe.
Yeah, actually, and that dovetails really well. I'm, I'm. Trying to jump into the participating in the county's regional climate action plan. And a lot of that is trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Um, and so some of the, you know, the commitments they're trying to get cities to make are to encourage things like that. So. I've, I've actually just been kind of re- reading up on that and um, we should try and incorporate some of those in into this element.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, maybe it's more of a general statement, but you know, to encourage, yeah, sort of these alternative modes of transportation. So. Um, I like your idea of the, uh, just going back to circ four point four. I liked your idea of, you know, saying like collector. Route might have sidewalks and traffic calming and so forth. I think unilaterally thing, you know, we don't like sidewalk. Um, it it just doesn't necessarily fit with also encouraging people to move around in a safe way around town. And and not driving all the time. I mean, if we want to reduce cars, we have to make it easy for people to get around. So that's just my, my opinion. Other comments, questions for Trevor? Diane?
And, you know, maybe smaller buses. Humboldt Transit Bus is so big and it's not full. And it goes down my street and Aaron's street. Um. I I just have a couple of comments on, um, the last one. When we get, after we get out of parking.
What page are you on, Diane?
Well, and then dial a ride service. I think that's good. Well, just on, um. Let's see. I just put some stars by some of the things that Trevor wrote, because I liked them. But we're not on energy yet. We're still on transit.
And we could talk about energy. Go ahead. Yeah, we're, we're just kind of moving around a little bit, covering whatever you want.
Okay, so, um. On the air quality, you're jumping in into that, um, some county committee, Trevor?
Yeah, well, so, um. It's. The state has a lot of, um, kind of greenhouse gas. Goals that it set and some of them are requirements, some of them are. Encouraged through things like the Sequel Process. So California Environmental Quality Act. Um, now requires you to analyze vehicle miles traveled, energy use of projects. But they're very diff, those things are very difficult to analyze on a project by project basis. So the idea with this regional cap or climate action plan is. That we all pool our resources and we all come together. And if we all agree to do, you know, our fair share. Then we can show the state that we're reducing vehicle miles traveled and reducing greenhouse gas emissions to meet the state standards. And so. It would sort of streamline projects, the review under something, the analysis under Sequa, for example. Now, how much that's going to benefit Trinidad? We don't do a lot of sequo documents. Um, you know, but on the other hand, Trinidad is very limited on what it can do on its own. Um, you know, it it's somewhat isolated. Um, it's going to be difficult to, to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Um, and that's the main, main source of emission. So. So that's what the cap is, is trying to do. Um. We're not there yet in terms of meeting the state requirements, but we're, we're working on putting that together. If that.
So I like to investigate the micro hydro. Opportunities in Luffenholtz Creek during the wet season to provide energy for the water treatment plant. Maybe that should be number one. But what I was worried about was the greenhouse gases and I'm thinking that the wood smoke is. Contributing to a lot of that. And, but I don't know.
Well, so wood smoke isn't as much of a, it it is, I mean, when you burn wood, um, there would be greenhouse gas emissions, carbon, whatnot. Um, really what the concern with wood smoke is more of an air quality issue. So. Um, the, the county obviously has good air quality. The, the one. Excedence that we have around here is, is PM ten and PM two point five, which is particulate matter less than ten microns and less than two point five microns. Wood smoke is, is a contributor of that. Um. The fog, salt air is as well. So there are natural sources. Um, road dust is, is another major contributor of that. Um, but that's, that's a. Mostly a separate issue because it's not a huge greenhouse gas source. Um, energy use and and vehicle use are are the two main, um, contributors to greenhouse gas.
Okay, I think that was the only one that. I was worried about. You know, and I, I think just getting the HCOG like, um. Richard said, you know, to get all of the. Transportation into, under one umbrella. You know, whether it's parking, biking, sidewalks, uh, transit, dial a ride. I know that we need to get more parking. That's all I know right now. All right, I'm done.
All right, thank you. Um, one more thing that I just caught in my notes, and I don't know if it's important, but on page fifteen, circ dash four. We say provide a pedestrian bike an equestrian friendly environment that allows, um, et cetera, et cetera. Equestrian friendly, I was surprised by a little bit because I don't think, is that a goal of ours? I mean. I don't think we allow horses today on any of the trails and probably not on any of the city streets. So I didn't, I mean, i- if we want to make it equestrian friendly, that's going to change things a bit. So.
If I may interject, uh, there, there are currently, um, the. Land Trust property, uh, where the, um, former Saunders property, uh, they do have horses there. And, uh, and people do ride the horses up and down Trinity Street. I've been watching that. Yes.
Okay.
And and there was the Equestrian Beach Trail. Um, at the edge of the park. I don't know if that's still there. It's kind of scary to go to that. Area of the park now with all the homeless and different sorts there. But there was a big equestrian trail there.
Okay, all right.
It is something that's, that has come up as a priority in the past. There have been e- uh, equestrian groups. I, you know, I don't know how, if it's really still a priority. And then there was also the, the sheriff for a while that was, um, equestrian and and she patrolled on her horse. Um, so yeah, I don't, I don't know if it could necessarily be a. Specifically a goal. Um, I don't know.
Okay, well, it sounds like.
Cross out that word or not?
Well, it sounds like we want to keep it because there's some folks that are, but maybe we just don't have a lot to say about it. That makes sense. I was just checking because I hadn't seen any horses, but other than, yeah, so good to know. Um, okay, other comments or questions? Commissioner Johnson, I see your hand up.
Uh, Trevor, I I know that in our last month's packet, we had the, um. The general plan map, the transportation and parking map. Are we going to take a look at that, uh, at some point?
Sure, anytime.
Okay, I have two comments on the map. Um, the first comment is that, um. Since this is a transportation and parking, I thought it might be useful to show where the, uh, charging stations are. And the second comment is that, um. If I'm reading the map right, uh, when I look at the intersection of scenic and Main Street. Um, there's, there's, you know, Murphy's Market in that parking lot and all of that area. And, um, that's not shown as, as, as public. Should that be shown as public?
That's a good question. I, I mean, it's private property. Um. I, you know, that it would be good to confirm with them whether they patrol or monitor their lot for. Private parking. Maybe that's a good question to add to the employee or or business parking survey. Um, is, is whether. You know, they get, their parking is impacted by, by tourists or whether they specifically provide any parking for tourists.
Yeah, because we show, we show, um, uh, private and or public and public after hours parking areas in the other parts of the. Of the city, but I, 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 that just stood out as not even being either one. So. Um, yeah, that would be a good question to answer.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. I mean, there's a lot of parking that is not shown on here. Um, that either we need to show it all or show none of it.
Well, that's not public parking, but people park on Parker Street going to the trail and then the employees park in that lot. Behind the market and then nobody else parks in there unless they've kind of gotten in there, um. With a dog or a lunch for a bit. I mean, Aaron, you, you could see that also. But it's, it's not public parking. I have asked in different times if someone could park there, um, or turn around in, in that. Area, but they. They'll sometimes try to park behind the market if they're dragging a trailer and that's not, um, allowed either.
Well, I did notice they put up signs saying no parking. But the way the signs are, are, they're located along View Avenue. Makes it look like they're saying no parking on the street where parking on the street would be allowed. Um.
And I know it, it's intended to mean on the private property, but the way they place the signs, it makes it look like you can't park on the street.
Yeah, I noticed that too when I was walking around. All right, um, I think unless there are other comments, we are wrapping up the discussion then on the general plan. And, uh, as we mentioned, we are not going to be discussing the House of Quest, um. Uh, design review at this, uh, meeting. We're going to push that to the next meeting. Uh, that packet's not ready yet. So that information's not ready yet. Um, so the next thing on our agenda is commissioner report. Are there any standing committee or other planning commission reports? Oh, and you know what? Pardon me, one thing. Let me just pause, take a pause. I forgot to open to public comments on the general plan. Are there any public comments on the circulation element of the general plan? All right, seeing none, I will resume and commissioner report. Okay, and I have none. Uh, how about a staff report? Trevor, did you have anything you wanted to cover with us?
Um, no, I think I've pretty much covered everything I would presented my staff report in our priority report. So, um, like I mentioned, I, I do. I, I'm gonna have at least two items, uh, two, um, permit requests on the next agenda. I'm hoping to get a third one. Um. But we'll, we'll see if I have time for that and. Um, we'll see what else I can get on, on there. I'm gonna continue to work on, on some of those, um. Priorities that we've talked about in the background and try and keep, keep the general plan, um, on the agenda. But, but we should think about. But we should think about, we can talk about it at the next meeting, scheduling a special meeting between the March and April meetings, because we do have an extra week in there. And if we have three applications on the agenda, we might not have much time for anything else.
Okay, okay. All right, that sounds good. Let's see, future agenda items. I heard this evening, there was a discussion about signage. Maybe on a future agenda. I think the other thing would be, I don't know if this should come to us, but I'm going to throw this out there. We've been hearing a lot of comments about websites, communication. I got an email or a call from somebody who had tried to contact me, but my contact information wasn't. The planning commissioners weren't listed on the website or something, and I haven't had a chance to check it. But maybe there's something about communication strategies for, you know, promoting the work the planning commission is doing. You know, contactability of the planning commissioners, I don't know. I mean, in general, I think of comms as being more, you know, the city council. But I'm going to throw that out there and see what you guys think. So other comments on some of the things here? Go ahead, Tom. I like to point at you, but you can't tell what I'm pointing at. I keep forgetting. I'm like, go ahead, Tom.
I'm sorry, just real quick, I was curious about like the church that Yeha owns and the church that's for sale. It seems like a similar scene, situation, is it not?
Well, so it's interesting. There have been two churches. So the West Haven one was purchased, you know, a number of years ago. But the Presbyterian across from Town Hall has been for sale. I thought that's, I think it's sold, or is in escrow anyway. And then up on Berry Road, there's also a church that has been not used for decades. And that also just sold. And I imagine both are going to be coming forward with rezone. Well, in fact, for the Berry Road, they just submitted their application for rezone. They just want to use it for residential. The Presbyterian Church, I'm guessing they'll want to do a plan development for that. So who just the one on Berry Road does have a caretaker unit, so that has a similar issue. And, you know, when we have talked about that amendment, you know, we have certainly considered how it might affect the other properties. The Presbyterian Church on Trinity Street does not have a residence in it now. So it can't be lived in.
Oh, okay. I was just curious, something to think about in the future. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and so that could come up as we talk about the priorities and around the zoning that we talked about earlier. That's a good point. And Diane, you had a follow on that? Or something else? You're on mute, Diane.
You're on mute now.
I'm all out of it today. So if they want to rezone those parcels, does that come to us, Trevor?
Yes.
Is that, is any one of those in the works?
Yes, like I said, I just received the initial application for the one on Berry Road. So working with them on getting what I need. That one should be pretty simple, because they just want to, they want to keep the existing apartment caretaker unit and then convert the church into a residence. And that is, and then if we rezone it to the suburban residential, which everything up there is zoned, they can have two residences. So that should be pretty straightforward. The Presbyterian Church is a little, it's a little tighter in terms of, you know, if they want to convert it to a commercial use to get parking and they're septic on there. But that's, they'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, because that parking is school parking, or is it city and school parking?
It's school parking.
No.
Yeah.
So that could, yeah, come up, what we discussed earlier.
I was curious about those. So the other agenda item is the Water Committee didn't get formed. No, we just need to keep on that.
I think that will be on the next agenda, because I think the council will take action on that. Okay.
So, yeah, so then we'll have our agenda, we can talk about committee. I think maybe if it does come on our agenda, maybe we can broaden it a little bit and just talk about committee participation. Like maybe we should revisit, I'm on the trail committee, for example. Maybe somebody else wants to take a turn and, you know, would enjoy that. And we could just kind of look at all of them and then the new water committee as well.
Yeah, and I would say that once the committee is established, and then I think this item then should just fall off our list and be handled by the Water Committee.
Okay.
Yeah, good point. I agree. We've got a lot on our plate, as we saw. I've got everything on my plate except dinner, not today. I'm just saying that long enough for, yes, please.
Sorry, just a quick question, the traffic calming measures, whose purview does that fall under as far as location and types and whatnot? Is that a planning commission, a council, or who?
It hasn't been a planning commission. It's really been the city engineer and the city council.
Okay. And things like speed humps would be included in that as well?
Well, I think it could be a planning issue, certainly it's addressed in the general plan. Most of that stuff doesn't require permits, although I am trying to pay more attention if those projects eliminate parking. So, you know, the Coastal Commission has made it clear that reduction in parking is a change in the intensity of use of land. And so it could require a coastal development permit. And the city has incrementally lost parking over the years with those and other kinds of projects. So, so like the pedestrian, the ADA project on Trinity Street this summer, you know, we looked at it pretty carefully to make sure there was no net loss of parking spaces.
All right, thank you. Okay, I see at this point, no other business. Last call, if anybody has anything, okay? No other business to come before the commission at this time, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye bye, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.